Alright, I have seven o'clock. We call this meeting to order. Let's all rise for the pledge.
To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'd like to welcome everyone. Those of you joining us online, welcome. Make a note that we do have six directors present, so we do have a form. Moving on, our first item is item 3.0, the consent agenda. Everyone that was included in your packet, everyone should have a chance to look at it. Does anyone have any questions for...
Sorry, Mr. Chair, regular agenda.
Oh.
I have my cell.
Yeah, let's all excited. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Sold.
Actually, I have a motion by Director Trigilio, seconded by Director Maniki, to approve the agenda. Does anyone oppose that? And for unanimous consent, now. Motion passes.
Like, you hold on to the top and it spins? And... Yeah.
Please Jonas, does anyone have any questions for Jonas? He was a student leader last year and was part of the card making with Mr. McCall and the a big piece in selling that, as was Lilian Nelson, who's down there as a student council member, so that's pretty cool. Does anyone have questions for Jonas?
I don't think so.
Okay. Cash, do you want to talk a little bit about, we had a meeting yesterday, do you want to talk a little bit about Kindness Week coming up?
Sure. This February, Kindness Week, February 8th is Kindness Week, February 14th through the 18th. We voted on dress-up days to do that week. We're going to do kindness activities every day and have drawings. We're making a list of kind things students can do to to give them ideas. Up next is Brantley with donations.
We've had two different families in our school that have had house fires this winter. The student leaders took money out of our fundraising account to give their families a gift card to buy groceries at Cali Biggies.
Alright, I think that's everything that we've done this month. Does anyone have questions for my student leaders?
What dress-up days did you guys decide on?
Well, we haven't told the students yet.
Okay, it's a secret.
Kinda gave me a surprise until the week before, the student leaders will go into the classrooms and then they'll, um, they'll surprise the kids with that. They love dress-up days, so we don't want any, uh, we don't want any of those to leak out.
Sure.
Anybody have any plans for kindness days in February?
No, not yet.
But nice job raising money last year, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Dress-up days, we're gonna sell candy grams and cotton candy. So that should be really fun. Also, we recently have had a staff member of the high school experience some health problems or concerns. So the members of the student council are, we're wanting to do something to help the family. So we're in the process of coordinating with the family to see how we can help them the best. And we also wanted to mention that we're working on finding a way to help some other families in our school district that are going through some times in need. So, that's what I wanted to talk about.
Alright, thanks Lynn. Anything else from the student council?
Nope, that's it. Does anybody have any questions for Lilian?
I don't think so. Alright, thank you very much. And also to this evening, we have an early childhood program update from Mrs. Schwartz.
Student leaders, you can log off. Lilian, try it.
Thanks guys, have a good night.
Thank you, Lilian.
Well, good night, thank you.
Good job.
Now that pressure is gone. Um, so I just want to give you an update on how early childhood has been going so far this year. We've had two family events. We had one in July to kind of help promote early childhood. Again, we had a, we were, we entered into the the Fourth of July parade, so we had a family event where we got together and made some signs for the, for our float and then we were in the parade. And then in December, we had a storybook walk at the fitness trail. And even though it was cold, we still had eighteen families come out and join us, so that was a really good turnout for the first, like, big family event, especially when it was outdoors and it was cold. We have been offering ECFE classes this year, which we didn't have last year. So it's been a challenge of mine to kind of rebuild the program. Knowing that it was already here, so a lot of the families that started coming were families that originally came to ECFE. We had, we've had twenty-three families sign up in the fall, which consisted of forty-two early childhood students. And then this winter, we increased it to twenty-five families and forty-five children. Now, we, there's actually more than two new families that came, but we lost a couple families. With winter, it's harder for families to travel just because it's cold. With our biggest ECFE classes being Tuesday nights, where we offer a meal, and Wednesday mornings have been like the big hit for classes. We had preschool screening in August, and then we'll have another one coming up in February. And school readiness, the numbers aren't quite where I'd like them to be. We have less students this year in our four-year-old program than we did last year. But I'm also aware that our kindergarten class is really big this year, so I think that accounts for the large number from last year. But our three-year-old program did increase. We had sixteen students last year and we have nineteen students this year. So, but I do think things will continue to grow as we get our, get the word out there that we're we're here, we're back. And the more families we get coming to ECFE, the more we'll get coming to our preschool programs, because they'll have already been introduced into our our school and what we're doing. Any questions for me?
Are any of those ECFE families from outside of the district?
Some of them are, yes. We've had a couple of Bagley families come to join us because Bagley is not offering ECFE this year.
Guess I don't have any questions. What does, uh, I guess, what does the future look like for our early childhood programs? What do you have planned for the future?
Well, we've started talking about another family event for the spring. Either having another storybook walk or there's, I don't know how many of you know Susan Lee. We've talked about having her come in and talk about butterflies with the kids and play some music. She's out of McIntosh. But we kind of have, you know, a family event in the works for spring, kind of like a last hurrah kind of thing. And then there'll be another preschool screening coming up in August. So I'm just kind of taking it, kind of talking with the families and seeing what they're wanting to have for us to come in. I know I've, I've talked to other preschool, other ECFE programs and they've done like pool nights with their families, or they've done just open gym night, just to like get kids so that they can run and move. So it's just kind of getting those things coordinated, I guess.
Is there any way of finding out if we're missing out on families that might be able to attend? Is there data out there that's, like if we need advertising or word of mouth? Get more families to participate?
I'm sure there is a way to figure it out. And I'll have to talk with the other, like, area early childhood coordinators and find out how they're getting ahold of families. I know MDE has suggested contacting the utility company to find out if there's families that have moved into town. Because they would have all the addresses of people. But I mean, I know there are families that are missing. I've had two families already call to sign up for screening and we don't have any information on either one of them. So. And the screening, I, so far it's been posted on our social media. And then it'll be in the newspaper and it'll be on the radio and it'll be on the Channel Seven. So, I'm not sure which ones it's all been put on so far, other than the social media and our webpage, but... But, and hopefully once we get those two families screened, we'll be able to get them into more programming as well.
Does it count any, they just, that's more demographic data, isn't it? It's not specific.
Yeah, and so that is confidential information, that, you know, names and addresses and things, those are not necessarily things we can access. So we have to kind of find a way to do it that doesn't break rules.
Right. My, my plan is to bring one of our early childhood forms and bring it up to the hospital, so they can put it into the the baby packets that the new parents fill out. And hopefully we can get some new, we can find out when the new babies are born that way and get them into the, into our database right away, instead of waiting until they're three. Which unfortunately is kind of when people start getting their kids into school, is when they're three.
That's one of the difficult things, because it's been some, when we have people moving in, one of their first things is maybe not school or contacting a school, even if they don't have school-aged children. But Lynette, here's one where I just took a call yesterday. We have a family coming in in August. And I have a five-year-old and a three-year-old. So, I mean, that family took the initiative of contacting the school and they're well in advance and they're just asking, you know, what needs to happen for fall enrollment, so. That is the hard part, is the outreach and connect, making those connections. You have to be very creative and a lot of it's word of mouth.
On the special, we're rebuilding the program. I mean, it's just gonna take a little time.
Alright, anything else? Alright, thanks Lynette, appreciate that.
Alright, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Moving on, item 6.0, finance. Six point one, fund balance.
Yes.
Report.
Just gotta suck it to get it up on screen. Okay. So, as I was reviewing the fund balance report earlier, and as we've been keeping track of things, we are still right on track with our budget that was adopted, our revised budget that was adopted. You can see our revenue. You can see where we are, where we are in comparison to a year ago at that time. This is the December report, of course. One thing I'd like to point out, this this food service balance, I think that's kind of interesting. Joan gave me some historical numbers as to where we were in food service at this particular time in history. And, you know, about two years, three years ago, we were in, it was about, let's see, about a twenty thousand deficit. And so, that, that particular fund balance, the way that the federal government is reimbursing us for meals has really helped. The other thing that we learned is that the USDA has has pumped more money into food programming. And so, we're going to be giving an additional twenty-five cents per meal on the reimbursement, and that adds up. So, we're projecting that that balance will continue to grow, rather than shrink, and if that happens, we may realign our, may do some realigning in how we're paying for some of the things in food service. You don't want to have a huge balance, you can't carry over a huge balance either, so. But we're doing, we're doing better there than, than we have other years. And if you look at the percentages of it, if you look at expenditures in the percentage areas, you know, we would have, at the end of December, we were about halfway through the year, so our expenditures are in that, you know, averaging thirty-eight percent altogether of our, what we projected. That's good. But of course, we also have some bills that have come in more recently, things like the snowfalling and those things kind of come in a little later. And so that, but we're still, we're still right on track. And our revenue is, especially in the general fund, is, is again, a little behind, but as we said before, with our federal monies, we have to spend the money before we can collect it, so we, Joan submits those. I don't know, every couple months, she submits those bills. So we're tracking where we want to be. Any questions about any of that?
Oh, unrelated. Snow removal, are we getting...
We just got a bill.
Okay.
Yes.
So a little bit better.
A little more timely.
A little bit, yes. This was, I think, for, for the first two months, whatever, so, yeah. And then you can see our bond funds, now we've made all those major payments that we had talked about, and so you can see where we are. After we paid for the side stools that we had to order. So, and, and later in the agenda, there is a proposal for bidding up a tuck pointing or asking permission to bid up a tuck pointing that we talked about paying for on this one. And then, as I recall, you had said we talked about allocating to the playground at the elementary as well. Principal Bushy and I haven't talked about that yet, but... We do need, we need to get this money spent probably by the end of the summer. Yeah, if you can't just sit out there, playground equipment ordering, it might take a bit to get it in, but I think we need to get it done. Any questions?
Alright, thanks Superintendent Chase. Item 6.2 is to accept a donation of one thousand dollars from Nord's Pharmacy and Gifts to remodel the St. Elementary STEM program. Copy of the check that was written out to Maggleson. In your attachments, always good when people are giving us money.
Yes, it is. We motion to accept it with thanks.
Motion by Director Trigilio, seconded by Director Christian, to accept donation of one thousand dollars from Nord's Pharmacy and Gifts for the Maggleson Elementary STEM Program. With many thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, 6.3. Is to approve the purchase of a 2020 C2 Thomas seventy-seven passenger bus from United Bus Sales. You can see a little bit of background in your packet there.
A couple of questions. So, seventy-seven passenger, I think it's in the things that have under storage compartments and stuff. What's gonna be our primary use for this?
We will be using this primarily for activities. And then the one that we purchased this fall will be a route bus. It's being used as a route bus right now. And it's, it's gas and they tend to like gas buses on the routes and diesel buses for activities.
So there's new ones, there's diesel?
Is, is it a pusher to that, or?
Rear engine?
No?
And we're, they, they will put in what we need so that we can haul the trailer with it, the lighting and the wiring and that sort of thing. That's part of the quote that they gave us.
Does this fit in with, I mean, it probably does with our fleet plan and the replacements and stuff. I know we just purchased one and stuff, and I mean, this seems like a decent price, especially for...
Yeah, it is, it is an exceptional price for the amount of miles this it's practically, it's practically, it's got seven thousand miles, yeah. It was the lease return. And what we did this year was to budget for a bus purchase and then we budgeted on the high end for another type of vehicle like a Suburban. And we haven't been able to get a van or a Suburban, nobody's got one, they won't even quote a price for us. If we order it, we're, we're not going to get it this year. So our plan is to, if we, if this is approved, we would have, we would have taken care of next year's bus purchase and instead we'll budget for at least a Suburban, maybe, maybe a Suburban and a van or two vans. And given given how finances seem to be holding up and the fund balance and all, it seems like this is a really good investment at this time.
So the bus we're, we're trading, what, in oil?
We're trading an old ninety-eight Thomas bus, and yeah.
You heard, I guess, one of them.
So what's the final purchase price coming?
It looks like with the trade, the add-ons and tax on license, it's going to be eighty thousand two sixty-five fifty.
But this one being two years old, seven thousand, what we got for warranty and stuff on that?
We have warranty, like it's almost, yeah.
Like just the, oh.
Yeah, yeah. The lease returns can come with, with the full warranty, and that's what it is.
This one already had the cameras installed in it?
I mean, I'm not, I mean, it's kind of in a replacement, but I mean, they just having two seventy-seven passenger buses was kind of a little different than what we originally talked about.
Yeah, and, and what we're finding is, especially on, if we're looking at lease returns, the seventy-seven passenger is standard. If you want something smaller and shorter, you have to order it and, and they don't come in on lease returns. And so, I, I, I know we talked about smaller buses and, and yet we get better prices when we buy seventy-sevens.
Yeah, it's just... I made a motion to approve the purchase of a 2020 C2 Thomas seventy-seven passenger bus from United Bus Sales, as we were saying. I'll second.
We have a motion by Director Ware, seconded by Director Maniki, to approve the purchase of the 2020 C2 Thomas seventy-seven passenger bus. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. One other question, Sue. Would you be able to get us a updated inventory? Bus inventory? Gear, model, passenger size, and then mileage? I haven't seen that for quite a while.
Gas, P-stem.
Just for, just for knowledge that we know.
Something that's been handled years.
Yeah, that would be fleet list, that's what I'm, what I'm looking for.
Yep, that should be a problem. In fact, we probably would want that for transportation community meeting this week.
Moving on, 7.0 reports. Principal Bushy?
Yeah, item number one. You can see a change there, and if you look at our sixth grade, that was an error on my part from previous enrollment numbers. Where I made the error was our shared enrollment, we have a shared and I counted them twice. So that number has been skewed. So, our actual in-house number right now in the sixth grade is thirty-seven. We did lose one. So we were at thirty-eight, but the actual, that's why that number was off there, so.
What's shared enrollment? I don't know if I remember.
It's like a shared option, so we have two students who participate in our specialty areas throughout the day. I just didn't, yeah. It's new to us this year. We haven't had that before. But then we did have a fourth grader move out of the area. And also a second grader, so. So we are down, we're down to two ninety-five K through six, two fifty-six total, three K through six. Item number two, we have, yesterday was the end of our quarter two, January nineteenth, I mean, it's for some, it may be, it took a long time to get to mid-year. For me, it wasn't, it's going fast. But with that, then we follow up with our parent-teacher conferences on February ninth, and that will take place from one to seven PM. And we'll be conducting our virtual conferences like we did in the fall. We did have good discussion when we had our staff available on the day on Monday during our staff meeting. And there were some that, majority was in favor of virtual, that's because of where we're at. Not something that we want to continue, but once we get past this stage, hopefully soon, that we can get back in person. But I told the teachers that there's an important meeting that needs to take place, conference, have them come in in person, so they're making contact with those, those parents. So that will happen February ninth. Item number four. To follow up our choir mini concerts, we're hosting band mini concerts, choir concerts for grades... Sorry, not band mini choir concerts, this is band concerts, mini concerts. And that would just be grade six. The first one will be held on Friday, February fourth, from twelve PM to twelve fifteen PM. When we held our choir concert, same timeframe, we kept it to fifteen minutes and it was successful. And then we have a follow-up concert on Monday, February seventh, from nine AM to nine fifteen. And then last item I have, Students of the Month for December. Teneren Finley-Holland had the Bondur, first grade, Yana Eageroff, Grant, Rendall, second grade, Caleb Sueno, John Olson. Third grade, Greta Tyken, Logan Bussargent. Fourth grade, Asher Ballstead and Isabella Johnson. Fifth grade, Emily Johnson and Amira Munter. And sixth grade, Taylor Olson and Haley Sunquist. Also, just to follow up, when I mentioned Monday at a staff meeting, we also had a workday for our teachers in regards to, we've been working on what we call now PLCs. with through E12. And they had a chance on Monday to meet as a as a team, go through and start the process of essential outcomes and preparing that document. And so by the end of this, and maybe Dominic will comment on it too, of the high school. But our goal in this process is to have one document that grades E through 12 that will kind of set the stage for what we're teaching and what we find as essential for each grade level as they exit or enter. It's been a good process. There's been a lot of time put in. Teachers have been, we have designated months where they need to put in time in regards to creating this and so far so good. I think everything's going well. Dominic has been the lead on that. He's done a fantastic job. So good job, Dominic.
I know we have quite a few new board members down the board. Can you give a quick and dirty about PCL?
PLCs?
PLCs.
So as part of our teacher evaluation process, the teachers, they call it professional learning. That's the acronym for a PLC. And in the past, what staff have done is they've had a topic, they've got together and then maybe they've done a book study or maybe they're working with like classroom management, discipline issue. So a group of three to to six teachers would get together. They would meet monthly and and tabulate those hours and it usually went through about seven to eight hours that they would put in. And then they would trade out a day at the end of the year where we have a work, a teacher work day. So they put in those hours a year doing some learning extension. Extension on what they're doing. And then they traded that that time out. This year as a district-wide focus, like Dan said, we're working on essential outcomes, which if you want to, Donald, dirty, what that is is if you had 10 things you wanted your your student to learn in the areas of your core subjects of reading, mathematics, science, social studies, and our specialist areas, if you could only teach these kids in a year, a semester, 10 things, what would those essential things be? Because typically, teachers are working off the graduation standards. And those grad standards, there may be 44 standards because they're broken down into small benchmarks. So what essential outcomes does is combine those benchmarks into some workable task. And like Dan said, we will have a pre-K or E12 document that says for social studies, this is where we start out and this is where we go. In our younger grades, there may be some smaller outcomes on there, especially with our pre-K stuff. There may not be 10. But as we work up, there should be somewhere in that neighborhood of 10. That's what our focus was to try to have. So it'll be a roadmap and we can see as a district where that comes in handy is if you if you replace a teacher due to retirement or resignation or something moving on, you can walk in and be seamless. Also, it provides educational equity when we have two different elementary classrooms. You're working on on the same focus. Once you get those essential outcomes and pieces, you look at assessments and how we're how we're measuring that learning. So that's kind of the process and the goal we're on. It's it's a multi-year, multi-step process, but this year we're focusing on getting everybody on the same page and track of what the essential outcomes.
Thank you.
I couldn't have said it any better.
Good job, Dan.
You want to go right into your.
Sure. Like like Dan said, it's the end of quarter and for us, it's the end of our first semester was yesterday, the 19th. For high school parents, the students' grades will be verified and posted on the 27th. We're working on a on a couple of things. It typically takes a little bit of time to get in. Incomplete students will have two weeks to make those up from the 19th if they made an arrangement with their teacher for some reason. I know we've had some kids out due to illness. So if if there's an I showing up on the report card, that'll be in there for about two weeks and then the final grade will be in there. But as of the 27th, the grades should be accurate for for the semester students. Item number, any questions on the end of semester? Item number two, we're working on our registration for the 2022-23 school year. This week, Council Hanson is going around the classes and talking about our registration guide and giving that, sharing that with the students so they can look over what courses they'll be registering for next year. On the 14th of January, which I believe was last Friday, she met up with the students that were interested in doing our online college in the high school. We talked about what kind of time commitment that involves for the students and what their end of the bargain is to have the privilege of taking college classes while in high school. And then on February the 1st through February the 3rd, students will will have time where they come in and they register for their classes for next fall. We are excited about a little bit of tweaking to our our course offerings. One of the one of the things that we're working on is we have a multimedia design class that students will be working, we just recently got a new website. And students will be doing things like website design and posting. Kids are able to shoot a picture, write a brief article and then post it to our website, to our Facebook, to our Instagram, to our Twitter. It all goes live kind of simultaneously. So Mike Ostadall is going to be working with that class. And he's going to be learning as they go. But because it is multimedia design, the other things that he'll be working with is working with Garden Valley and TriCaster. Using video equipment that we have and setting some pieces out. And there's potential for some other other things that we haven't quite purchased yet too. But moving forward, if we were to get some digital type scoreboards, they would be selling advertisements and doing some production work. And also, our hope is that that class will will shoot a picture and that one picture would be used in four different ways. They would they would potentially, they'd be on our website and on Facebook feeds, but it also went to the yearbook. We had digital scoreboards, you know, something like that, about the half line or breaks and pieces like that. So just getting the most out of and training our students for 21st century technology jobs. Things where they can walk into a television or radio station. We have access to equipment that that like public television news stations don't even have. So getting the kids trained in using that kind of stuff just makes them have much more marketable skills. And that's just one of the classes. So any questions on registration?
I have to say I'm pretty impressed with the the headway as far as that multimedia program. Just a couple of months ago, when we were talking about scoreboards and things like that, it was just at the beginning stages where where we were thinking about what could be possible and and now two months later, it's it's like, well, we thought we're a couple of steps ahead now. So it's exciting to hear.
And and that scoreboard piece may not be in there, but we have the class in place now and we have, we'll see number, our hope is to get roughly 20 students into that class. We'll take, you know, work with less, but many hands make light work.
Yeah.
So spread that spread that out and the more students we can reach. And that class is also going to be off for 10 through 12. And you might say, well, why don't we don't have freshmen in there? Freshmen have very limited elective options and we want to keep them on. You know, maybe they're going to want to take a Spanish for three years. So that type of a piece. So we'll we'll get those sophomores in and trained and they could have three years of working in that class if that's the passion.
That class, is that going to, it almost seemed like that kind of also run along with the programming for the CNC sort of thing? Kind of would it not almost?
There we're we're doing some other interesting stuff where we're expanding out that CNC. Myla Donovan, our acting teacher, is is getting trained in from Tom Linger, we're finding a very good machine course. So we'll expand out on that reach. And there may be some some different STEM elected that's going to be coming in for our ninth through 12th graders. So they'll they'll be able to use the CNC machine, use drones, our 3D printer, things like that.
Pretty interesting.
If there are no other questions, I'll move on to item number three. Spotlight on excellence. Again, like Dan said, we had our our staff meeting on on Monday, the 16th. And we talked about just where we're at with staff, staff availability, staffing, health, COVID and all those concerns. We initially planned to do spotlight to bring the community back into school to highlight and showcase all that we're doing. But at this time, we thought it best to to err on the side of caution and work with virtual. And we're going to go back to student-led conferences where the teacher will facilitate and meet and will set up a virtual conference. And that way, parents can be at home and they can come in and meet and then instead of kind of running, make it to another class, they just kind of log on virtually. The students will use their devices. They'll talk about their goals and what they're doing. But we will also have open spots during the day. So if parents want to talk with their teacher because their child's struggling in the class, they'll have an opportunity to visit with individual teachers. And then that will be on, instead of the 10th, we will roll that hit back to February 9th because we'll have from 1:00 till 7:00. Questions on that? The last item is our is the Winter Principal Conference that I will be attending next week down in Minneapolis-St. Paul. It's an exciting opportunity that I wanted to thank the district to send me down to to network a little bit, work with my colleagues to come up with. It's ever-changing times and I know when I'm talking with Dan, there's only so much that your your career prepares you for. But when you're working with talented individuals across the state that you can share ideas and hey, how are you doing this? Because COVID was something that nobody trained for. And getting some of these other pieces and and going in and not only that, but just the speakers, the Commissioner of Education will be there talking about the direction of education in Minnesota. So I'm thankful for the opportunity to go down and get a little more knowledge to bring back home to the students. There are no questions about that. Student enrollment, we are down to 283. We're down one, but we did we did lose a senior, the transfer transferred out to an online institution. But as of today, we also gained a freshman. So we're back up to 284. There's potential for another freshman student to be coming in. I was working with the family today, so the registration hasn't come in come in fully. We may have one more student, I believe, that has transferred this year or falls. So it would kind of be a wash and balance in there. But our enrollment's kind of maintained steady here on that 284 range.
All right. Thanks, Principal Calm. Superintendent Chase.
Well, just a few things. I'm not going to touch on every single thing in here. First of all, our website update on number two. I'm going to show you what it's going to look like when it goes live. You can see our pictures. These are this year's pictures. So that's somewhat similar. You can access parent view here in the activities calendar. You can search for things. You can click on the menu here and see kind of some of the same sorts of things that you see in the in the app. Similar buttons. And then, you know, free and reduced application, strategic plan, public notices, those kinds of things that we have to keep on here. So there's that. At some point, we may do like a movie kind of view here. We can, we get a, they help us with a free upgrade every year at G Corporation. But we, once we get students working on this, they'll be able to, you know, drop in a movie or different things here instead. In fact, we were playing with it and dropping in pictures and things. It's pretty easy, which was a pleasant surprise. We still need a picture of Maggleson. You can see both buildings here. And then this YUS piece, we kind of highlighted some of the major things that, some of the things that make us attractive. And then you'll see the news feed, different news articles. And then on this side is our live feed. And on the live feed, it's the same stuff that goes on Facebook. And so it's just, and it's just kind of keeps everything fresh and up to date. And then these will, these articles will change and grow and update as we as we have new things happening. So that will go live on Monday. And it's been a process and it's been an interesting process and I'm really grateful that we were able to do it and then and then connect it to the app. So we use this Thrill Share piece to drop things in. And if I want to do, say, I want to do an announcement that goes up to phones and to, and all of those things, Facebook, everywhere, I just come in here, put it in, I do it from my phone and there it goes. It's so much easier. Ah, Mr. Call is here. Good. I wanted to touch on MSBA. When we were at the conference this past week, I attended and Director Marcus attended, Care Director Marcus attended a session on the legislative platform and they shared some information and I they laid it out very nicely so you could actually see the impact on your school for what we've been calling the education, the special education cross subsidy. Special education services are provided by law. They are provided because years ago, the federal government enacted the IDEA. And when they enacted it, they promised to pay 40% of the cost. They never have. Right now, they're paying about, in our region, it's it amounts to about 18% of the cost and that's less than it was previously. Minnesota also has some extra requirements and they also don't fund them completely. So when it comes to the reimbursement from Minnesota, we get reimbursed for about, in 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 the ASAP group that we belong to, it's about 39% of our state special education costs. And right now, MSBA and MASAA are working on their push for this year. And the big push really is to end the cross subsidy, to have the state step up and pay for the parts that they're requiring and to try and get the federal government to at least go back to where they were in 2016, which was more than they are right now in terms of their reimbursement, but to to eventually try and live up to that 40% commitment. So they ran numbers for the districts. What we're, when we pay, when we have this cross subsidy, that means that's money that's taken from our general fund to pay for special education services that are mandated by the state and federal government. So kids who get special education services, they need them, they need them to thrive. And it's like an extra scoop of whatever it is they need. But that cross subsidy here in our district is costing $408,489 out of our general fund budget to pay for those requirements that are legally ours. So that's about $648 per student. And if the state and the federal government lived up to their promises, what they what they said they would do when they put these mandates in place, that's $408, $408,000 that we could use for our programming and things like that. So things that there that are being recommended right now, there is a federal idea resolution that MSBA is asking boards to adopt and then send on to federal legislators. And I think I would I would ask that our board consider doing that in February. And then MASAA has drafted a letter that we can adapt and send into our state legislators and the governor to push. Right now with with the surplus as it is, it's an opportune time to push for that or the state to pick up their share of the costs. So that was that. Referendum information. I've reached out to their financial. They're putting some things together for us for our operating levy consideration. A meeting with MBE next week to get some information about their guidelines and the timelines and the kinds of things that we need to do. I gave you each a copy of a, an opportunity, a learning opportunity that MASAA puts together regarding. regarding preparing for school tax elections and all of that. And so if that's something that the board would like to send people to, I, we can get that set up. And I, you know, right now, in my conversations with Baird, we're talking about the, the programming that we're putting in place to meet our strategic plan. The kinds of innovative things that we're, you know, bringing in our FFA program and, and our ag teacher and the costs that go along with that. The costs that will go along with the multimedia design if we expand it, the way that we're planning on doing, all of those things that, that we're doing to meet our strategic plan come with a cost. And, and so we're talking about, that's what we're looking at with our referendum, how we, how we pay for these things that our community has said they value. So that's, those are the costs that I'm going over with, with Michael that he met back in December. What, what does it cost to run this program, our elementary STEM program? You know, that's something, that's part of our 21st century learning design and, and it's expensive to run, you know? So that's kind of what we're looking at. And then just committee meetings that are upcoming. And then we will be, Polk County superintendents are going to be meeting with Polk County Social Services and the attorney's office to try and bring some clarity and some consistency to what's happening with truancy. We were, we were fortunate to meet with the Boston Police Department earlier this week and they were, you know, they're on board with helping us with truancy and we need to have that collaboration and partnership and, and really address, you know, what's, what's preventing kids from being here? Why aren't they in school? Any questions? It's a busy time.
Thank you, Superintendent Chase. Moving on, 8.0 personnel. First item is 8.1. To approve or not approve a resolution directing administration to make recommendations for adjustments in curriculum, program, and staffing.
This is an annual resolution and it gives us permission from the board to, to look for efficiencies, but it also gives us permission from the board to look at programming. And as, as you can, as you heard Mr. Crump say, we have some programming changes that we're, we're wanting to put forward. So this year, this year, because of our federal funds, we're, we're fortunate, we're not looking at making staffing reductions, we're looking at programming and curriculum changes. This gives us permission to do so.
Yeah, and I think that's important because, I mean, like you said, this is annual, but it always brings a little heartburn to everybody. But like you said, we're committed to the staffing side of things. Motion to approve the resolution. Second. Motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Trillo, to approve the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, 8.2, approve or not approve the hire of Sarah Bethke as the assistant speech coach. Your attachment there states how the speech program has grown over the past year, the number of students in that program, there's a need for, for two coaches, so I believe that it's already on the, the addendum, not addendum, but it's part of the salary schedule already, so it's there. There's nothing we have to do on that end, so.
How many, how much growth have we seen in that? Yeah, I mean, it's okay to be open, but I'm kind of curious.
We've seen a significant increase in the younger group, some of the younger kids. I think we're, do you have any idea, John, like, is it like, how many kids we have in speech now? It's.
Last year with, with COVID, we did not run a junior high program because you needed for every six students you had, you brought to a competition, you had to have one or more coaches, you know, one coach. So we, we reduced that a little bit, but I, I believe her numbers, the junior high ones, I think they increased, but by adding that on, we had about, and again, there are different requirements, so we need more, we need another coach over there. But I think she had in that 10 to 20 range of those kids that were coming out interested in doing speech. And Sarah has, you know, kind of helped out a little bit and, and with her background, it's, it's just kind of natural bit.
Great skill.
Yeah. Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Director Trillo, seconded by Director Manneke, to approve the hire of Sarah Bethke as the assistant speech coach. Is there any further discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8.3, accept or not accept the letter of resignation for elementary para educator. Elementary para Julie Bergman resigned her position, has it December 22nd? Do you accept any another position? Motion to approve the resignation. Motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Munter, to accept the resignation of elementary para educator Julie Bergman. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4, approve or not approve the hiring of elementary para educator Jasmine Howgan? Is that how you say that?
Yep.
All right. Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Bushy?
Yeah, that, this hire would be to replace the resignation of a para educator before. So that's, that's what this position is looking at. Actually, it's on here. Or resignation or a hire?
Hire.
Motion to approve the hire. Second. All right, we have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Trillo, to approve the hire of elementary para educator Jasmine Howgan. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8.5, approve or not approve the hiring of a part-time high school para educator Sarah Stanley? Any additional insight on that, Principal Crump?
We looked, Sarah has, has kind of been in there, we did, because Mr. Mack applied for a medical leave and was granted and still unable to return to work. And we're also down another full-time para position. But Sarah, there's a potential of expanding her position out, apparently with childcare, we were able to work with her for three days a week for a part-time position. And at this point, it is difficult to get somewhere qualified to work with our students. Sarah has a background in counseling and child psychology, she was also a youth pastor. So she has experience working with her kids. It's a good pickup and find good mystery.
Motion to approve. Second. We have a motion by Director Trillo, seconded by Director Christian, to approve the hire of part-time high school para educator Sarah Stanley. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 8.6, approve or not approve the hire of elementary para educator Nicole Sueno? Yes, I got her name, Sam?
Yeah. This is a position that we've had open since September, we just haven't been able to fill. We were fortunate to have Nicole apply for the position. She had worked with early childhood through intercounty. And so she has quite a bit of experience actually working within our building with intercounty. And it has worked out that she was looking for a change and we were looking, so it's a great pickup for us to do.
Second. We have a motion by Director Munter, seconded by Director Christian, to approve the hiring of elementary para educator Nicole Sueno. Is there any further discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on, educational, 9.1, this is to approve or not approve an out-of-state travel request for the art program. The board had previous, previously approved this trip for the art program, I believe it's to Chicago for the art students, but it was canceled due to COVID restrictions. Are you there, Mr. McCall? Maybe Superintendent Chase?
As, as noted, we did, the board did approve this trip. It would have, would have taken place in the spring of 2020. Students did their fundraising and had planned to visit several art-related places, including Blik Art Supply, which is where they buy all their art supplies, and the Shed Museum and quite a few other places that they were planning to go. When the shutdown happened, then it, it seemed that it would not happen and it didn't. So the money's been sitting there in their account and they've been waiting to go. They'll be traveling by train. They'll be traveling by bus to catch the train, catch a train in Minneapolis.
Detroit Lakes, what is that here? Detroit Lakes, is that?
Oh, DL, okay, yeah.
That, that was the initial one, there may be a plan where they go down to the Minneapolis to take off from there directly. They're, they're looking at what's most cost and time efficient.
So this might change as far as departure?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're planning to go by train and, you know, visit Chicago and they, I think they've realigned some of the places they're going to go for safety reasons. There were a couple of things that happened, but so they're not, there's a couple of places that were originally planned that they're not going. But this will allow them to finally take a trip and the money's there and if they had received previous approvals, so my recommendation, and I believe Principal Crump's recommendation is that we, is that you approve the, the request.
This looks like 12 students. Is that not right for the list for the number of them?
Yeah.
I think 12 there are students.
There may be a slight reduction in that number because I know that just like Minneapolis-St. Paul has some vaccination requirements, students are going to be coming and that should come in the way up.
All right. An emotional trip. Second. We have a motion by Director Trillo, seconded by Director Manneke, to approve the travel request for the art program class. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on. Your trip got approved, Mr. McCall. Does anybody have any question? The one question, I guess we did have, departure, is that departure location, is that solidified yet?
I'm, I'm looking at leaving Boston High School with this, with the minibus and driving to Detroit Lakes.
Okay.
Catch Amtrak in Detroit Lakes.
Okay. And then number of students? Is that still 12, the number that was on the?
Well, I did have, today I just found out that Chicago has imposed a vaccine and mask mandate for public facilities, so quite a few students dropped out because of that, so I'm not sure how many are going to want to go at this point.
Okay.
We have a lot of kids that want to go, so those that dropped out, I'm sure are going to get replaced. I'm limited to the amount of students I can get on the short bus there.
I think we're, I mean, most of the questions probably have.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it sounds like it's, like I said, it's something we approved before and I think it's well designed.
So thanks for the planning. Thanks for the opportunity.
Hopefully you get to go this year.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
All right, thanks for hopping on and have fun.
Okay, take care of you guys, thanks.
All right. Uh, moving on, 10.0 operational. First item, 10.1 is approve or not approve mileage rate. Past years, the district has complied with the IRS mileage rate. That recently has increased from 56 cents a mile up to 58 cents a mile. We're just revising our rate to comply with the IRS mileage rate. Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Trillo. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item 10.2, this is authorize administration to see bids to complete tuck pointing in the elementary exterior wall in the high school courtyard outlined in the LPFM plan. Motion to approve authorization. Second.
I got a couple of questions here for this.
Any further discussion?
Thank you. So, I mean, like you said, this is what we're talking about before using the media account, let the word, or X, I shouldn't even say X, but having some of rail TFM money with, let me refer, to do that. Are we, when we seek these bids on this, you know, we keep it separate, are we going to look at getting some prices on the old gym, recent structure?
We could, as I mean, if the contractors would be willing to do that. I mean, our, our main concern right now is getting the elementary.
Right, because that's what we have funding for.
Right.
I mean, as we move forward, if we have them here, you know, I guess we're seeking bids on this, but.